Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this May 18th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Due to the current local, state, and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, with members participating remotely via electronic means. This is discussion meeting and no votes will be taken. In accordance with our meeting notice, the board will enter closed session at the conclusion of our meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on Channel 15, and a recording will be available in both places. Please remember to mute yourselves when not talking to avoid background noise. And for the benefit of all of us, but in particular for our interpreters and those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, and into your microphone. Will the clerk please call the roll on the rec for the record?
Dr. Arnison.
Here.
Dr. Alamin.
Yes.
Dr. Ali. Dr. Suriel.
Here.
Dr. Ins. Dr. Jordan.
Here.
Dr. Caprini.
Present.
Dr. Pauli's here, Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Rep. Gabor Meskell.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is an update from the academic team on several areas, including literacy. Directors, we will pause and take questions after each section for questions. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, Student Representative Gabor Meskell, Board Directors, Staff, Members of the Public. Thank you for joining us here tonight. Tonight, you're going to hear information from Senior Officer Dr. Fearing about our literacy information, our literacy program, about how we prepare our staff and how we teach our children to read. And well, in the technical sense, Dr. Fearing will be talking with you about our birth-to-adult literacy framework. In the adaptive sense, she is going to be talking about the Minneapolis Public Schools' values and our value to prepare students for college or career. The board approved a set of values to which this literacy framework speaks, values such as supporting our students, our comprehensive district design, curriculum transformation work, early childhood support, and ensuring a well-rounded and equitable education for our students. And this literacy framework does truly embody how Minneapolis Public Schools can and must ensure that we're providing each child, you know, the success they need to, or the opportunities they need to be successful. So I'm looking forward to having you hear a little bit about this framework, and it certainly will be available to answer any questions you might have. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fearing at this time.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Board members, Student Representative, Superintendent Graff, and the public. This evening, you'll be able to hear from the Academic Division staff as they share academic updates and our birth-to-adult literacy framework development. But before we begin, I want to acknowledge the deep emotions that are with us all tonight, especially in light of the events today, yesterday, and even in this past year. This is the space that we're in. We need to continue to acknowledge the absolute necessity for healing spaces each day for our grieving families and communities. We also need to acknowledge the righteous anger of our students, families, and communities at this time. Whether post-traumatic or continued traumatic stress of our students, families, and communities, we have the obligation to step back, pause, and know that we all have a role in being present, listening, and supportive of each other at this time. The opportunity for hope is here, but we must choose hope and joy and lay the necessary groundwork for all of our Minneapolis students, families, and communities to know that we are listening and we are committed to doing better. This starts with culturally sustaining, standards-aligned, rigorous academic instruction. The most egregious action at this pivotal moment is to do nothing, to discontinue strong teaching and learning, and to expect the futures of our students to magically change. I ask specific support from school board directors and Superintendent Graff to continue to prioritize literacy through budgets, understanding the MPS literacy and language progression, and speak publicly to its importance as literacy is what will liberate our students. I ask we learn from past practices that have disadvantaged our students of color from receiving strong literacy instruction, as skills may have been the focus, but students' identity was made invisible in the process. I ask you to be involved from building of this framework to the implementation of work plans to celebrating student outcomes in the near future. And to the public, I ask for authentic partnership that represents all of our students in Minneapolis, not just those who found success and not just those who need more support. We will continue to scrutinize what is being put forward to us as solutions, to make sure these solutions are beneficial for all students, allow our students to be their best selves, and to not have to give up their identity for something we believe is a quick fix in the end but will do irreparably harm. Speaking as an Asian American during Asian American month, I experienced both skill and drill and whole language phases in my education. Regardless of the type of instruction, I had yet to see myself, my true self, highlighted in the instruction, resources, or materials. I did not have one teacher of Asian or Asian American descent who allowed me to know and to use literacy as a tool for liberation. Must a student have to sacrifice their own identity, culture, and language to become literate? To understand the power of literacy is to have it be taught and experienced in a culturally sustaining way, and I'm hopeful this day of literacy liberation will come, where skills and identity and culture and language all come together to create a perfect storm for Minneapolis students to excel in literacy. As we proceed through the presentation tonight, I would ask Board Directors and Superintendent Graff and those in the public to see the ongoing work through the lens of recognizing, responding, recovering, and excelling. Interim Executive Director Jen Rose will now introduce and lead you through our academic approach as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fearing. Good evening, Chair Ellison, Board of Directors, Superintendent Graff, and the public. My name is Jen Rose, and I'm the interim Executive Director of K-12 Academics. Tonight, I would like to begin with our focus in academics as we move forward. MPS students, staff, families, and communities have and are experiencing layers of traumatic impact, impacting learning of all students. Academic learning is inextricably, inextricably linked to feeling safe, social, emotional learning, mental health. Students must have the opportunity to access culturally sustaining and academically rigorous learning environments that include SEL and mental health supports. MPS academic commitment now and moving forward is to recognize, respond, recover, and excel. For the first point, recognize the immense impact of the pandemic. Tragedies and trauma has had on learning and celebrate authentic learning that has occurred because of COVID-19 and local events. Respond with educational approaches aligned to MPS equity competencies that transform core instruction through culturally sustaining practices such as identity, knowledge, skills, and criticality, and intentionally focus on standards-based instruction, skill development, and rapid intervention response. Short-term responses should sustain long-term results. Number three, recover with expanded intensity in and out-of-school support and opportunities for students, families, and communities. Support should include inclusion of social, emotional learning, mental health, and healing spaces. Academically, intentionally professional, intentional professional development, resources, and materials, and expectations on Tier Two and Tier Three interventions that are monitored and adjusted as needed is a priority. Including more community-based partnerships that support academic intervention and acceleration is a priority. And point four, excel in learning with joy and resilience. Celebrate authentic learning that has occurred. Commit to making and continuing instructional changes that change opportunities that have afforded us. Focus on the strengths and assets of students, families, and our community. We will now transition into an update of our MPS birth-to-adult literacy framework update. Please note, the Academic Division includes teaching and learning, Indian education, Office of Black Student Achievement, early childhood, professional development, multilingual, and college and career readiness. And each department leader has been responsible for the development of this framework, as this framework is a collective work across the academic division. Therefore, I would like to turn over the presentation to Jennifer Simon, Director of Indian Education, who will take us through our birth-to-adult framework.
Hometakiebe, ampetu de chante washte, na pe chiusa pie. I greeted you as my relatives, and I greeted you with a good heart and a handshake this evening. My name's Jennifer Simon. As Jen Rose had said, I am Director for Indian Education. You might be wondering why I'm starting off this introduction of literacy framework, but as Executive Director Rose mentioned, it has been the collaborative work across all academic departments to create and own the framework, as the literacy success should be seen by all students. I represent all students, but particularly our American Indian students within, through the Indian Education Department. And we know that American Indian students have been and continue to be underrepresented in education, in the education system across, within the United States. My invested work in developing a comprehensive and culturally sustaining framework is personal and professional. Therefore, I have the pleasure of leading you as one of the individuals through our work in the development of this framework. As a reminder, the framework is the first step of this process. It grounds us in our values, our beliefs, and our priorities. We have taken time to ensure that what we state as our beliefs, values, and priorities align to what MPS stakeholders also view as theirs. We are in May and completing our stakeholders' feedback right now, so that we can revise our framework in July. The framework then will inform the work plans, deliverables, and metrics that we will be working on in and through July. Often, we jump to the work plan before taking the time to make sure we are aligned in our values, beliefs, and priorities. So we have been focusing on that as a first step. We believe this work is crucial to the equitable education of literacy for all students, but we are also very conscious of the time it takes to move forward with engagement. A translated deck of the framework will be available on our academics website. Next slide. Just starting us off and grounding us, as I just spoke about, this is a quote from Amanda Gorman from "The Hill We Climb." "For a while, we have our eyes on the future. History has its eyes on us. This is the era of just redemption we feared at its inception. We did not feel prepared to be the heirs of such a terrifying hour, but within it we found the power to author a new chapter." Looking at the framework vision and mission, the purpose of the creation of the birth-to-adult literacy framework is to set the stage regarding MPS literacy moving into the future. You will see, as we move forward in our presentation tonight, that this framework stresses and emphasizes, first, the inclusion of all learners; second, clearly states MPS' values, expectation, and implementation of literacy within MPS; and third, it is focused on the students who have been underserved in literacy, specifically our students of color and American Indian students. The creation of this framework has taken this calendar year to complete, in part due to the expansion of a typical K-12 literacy framework, to expand broader to be birth-to-adult within MPS. We believe that all of our families, students, and communities are included within this literacy framework. And while there are not many national models of a framework that includes from birth all the way through adult, we were able to utilize the knowledge and skills of our current MPS staff to inform this framework. I will now turn it back over to Executive Director Rose to take you through more specifics around the staff expectations, expected student outcomes, and our commitment to families. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simon. We're going to move into the framework staff expectations. The framework includes staff, which includes all educators in the building, expectations, and the anticipated student outcomes, as well as our commitment to families and community. We want to clearly articulate and measure for accountability. There's a few things that I would like to pull out from this slide. It is important to note that any instructional practices must first and foremost be culturally sustainable. This means that instructional practices must include the four levers of restoring narrative, questioning power, prioritizing learning, and co-creation. For staff, the framework includes strong expectations of literacy instructional practices that includes using data-driven decision-making and standards-based aligned lessons. This means that educators must know grade-level standards, strong literacy practices that includes utilizing assessments as a way to know students' literacy level, and using rapid cycles of intervention and extension as needed for each student. With these expectations comes support. With high expectations, we have to have high support. Important to have professional development, the importance of having professional development that we are offering. We can't have a whitewashed curriculum. Therefore, the following professional development will be offered and will be continued to be offered for any educator in the areas of reading strategies, both early reading and secondary reading comprehension, dyslexia characteristics, literacy strategies that all teachers can use, and in curriculum transformation. Continuing on, additional commitments that staff will engage in. Communication with our families and collaboration with colleagues are two other important aspects of the framework. Communication with families must be culturally responsive, making sure it's accessible in the home language and appropriate. Families can expect communication about their students' literacy progress through the school year that is in addition to conferences, report cards, or IEP meetings. Staff will engage with families in school-wide literacy events such as open houses or workshops, and provide any necessary training for parents so families are truly equal partners in their child's education. Families have the right to understand MPS programming, especially special education services. Let's look at the second bullet point. Collaboration is another big part of the framework. Collaboration with colleagues so every educator in MPS designs lessons that support literacy as a path to social change, and every educator reviews measurements of literacy engagement and growth to make adjustments to their plans and practices, so that every student's needs are met. Ensuring staff are prepared and supported to do this is critical. The framework for student outcomes, so that learners, we can engage and do everything in the previous slide, so our learners can read, write, comprehend at grade level or higher, and find liberation and agency as fluent readers, writers, and speakers. Learners will engage in literacy practices that develop our students' multifaceted identities, skills, intellect, criticality, and joy. Additionally, viewing students as partners in their literacy education and literacy as a path towards social change. As part of the framework, our commitment to families includes to know that learners' literacy strengths and areas for continued growth and can support their learners' development; to see themselves as partners in literacy through co-creation of learning and oversight of decision-making; to see their identities, cultures, and languages are honored and embedded in student literacy learning; to perceive school communication as positive, ongoing, and accessible. Before I turn over the presentation to Melody Lockwood, our MTSS coordinator, I did want to highlight how our literacy work moving forward aligns to our budget allocations. For SY 2122, we are allocating the following: 1.9 million to K-2 literacy and math toses, one in each building with K-2 learners, and another 2.4 million in direct services such as Lexia Press, which is a support for staff development and resources for core instruction and intervention. Software, books that are integrated into our science kits, multilingual writing, and anchor text in secondary are just a few examples. This would be a total of 4.3 million dedicated to literacy in SY 2122. As we continue to plan forward in this work, we will continue to prioritize and align our budgets. I will now turn it over to Melody Lockwood, MTSS coordinator, to continue to provide more information on MTSS as the foundation of strong literacy instruction.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Melody Lockwood, and as Jen said, I am the MTSS coordinator for Minneapolis. And like you heard Jennifer Simon say, this framework is both personal and professional for me as well. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the multi-tiered System of Supports Framework, or MTSS as we call it, as it relates to our literacy plan. But before I can do that, it's important to note here that history and context matter when we talk about literacy, and much of what we see today is a symptom of our history and systems in this country and district. This graphic here aims to show where we've been, currently are, and what we're going to do to create systems that serve all students, so that literacy is no longer a tool of oppression, but a tool of liberation. The literacy framework will dismantle the systemic racism and classism of literacy instruction in Minneapolis. This framework, as it is written, will change the narrative in Minneapolis, so that literacy is a powerful tool that allows all learners and families to challenge the status quo. MTSS is a comprehensive, evidence-based framework that supports the academic, social, emotional, physical, and mental well-being and development of all learners. And when we talk about MTSS, strong instructional core, meaning instruction and support that all students receive, is really the heart of MTSS. That is where we start to reach and meet the needs of all students. And strong implementation ensures that no matter what assets or areas of need a learner brings, in Minneapolis, we partner with families and are prepared with strong systems and structures to support students to make sure that they're successful. To do this, we prioritize collaboration between teachers, school and community partnerships, family engagement, and transformation of our curriculum so that it is culturally sustaining and centering the learners in every building. It's important to note that all learning is social, it's emotional, and it's relational. We, the district, schools, educators, are responsible for creating and maintaining a culture and climate where learners feel safe, so that they can engage in authentic literacy practices. Implementation of the MTSS framework is critical to achieving educational equity. It is truly equity in action. It's the system, it's the structures, and responsiveness to students, and the use of current research and best practices that inform what happens in a building, whether a student needs instruction, intervention, or an extension. All right. So if you go to the next slide and take a look at this graphic, this shows the processes a school site team engages in to meet the needs of all learners, which is a major part of the implementation of the MTSS framework. Those blue arrows on the outside of the graphic show that collaborative process that educators engage in, which we call professional learning communities, or PLCs. You might also hear them referred to as collaborative team meetings. Those verbs on the outside, plan, do, study, act, are the actions that educators collaborate around during their professional learning and collaboration time. This process, it's cyclical, it's ongoing, and all rooted in four questions. What do we want all kids to know and be able to do? How do we know if they learned it? How will we respond when some students do not learn it? And how will we extend the learning for students who are already proficient? This cycle shows how educators collaboratively plan, collaboratively implement instruction, collect and analyze evidence of learning, and reflect on practices, which help decide if educators create new differentiated plans or move on to the next unit skill or standard. So let's take a closer look at the center of this image. So look at that blue diamond. In the middle of that, we see all learners participating daily in Tier One, or you might also hear it referred to as Core Instruction. The educator differentiates Core Instruction or Tier One and provides whole group or small group intervention and support for students. So regardless of where a student comes in, the goal is to always strive to accelerate learning and extend on concept, ideas, and skills, which is that right side of this blue diamond. It's also important to note that Core is intended to meet the needs of no less than 80% of students. If needed, students have access to Tier Two Small Group Intervention and Tier Three Intense Individualized Intervention, whether they're an advanced learner or need more support. And this is typically 15% to 20% of a population at a school. So you can see that in the blue diamond on both, you see that in the blue diamond on both sides of Tier One. And by implementing strong structures, systems, and Core at every site, engaging in collaborative learning, providing intervention and extension to those that need it, and prioritizing coaching and feedback, we will be set to meet the needs of all students. And as you learn about the literacy framework tonight, you will see MTSS, that framework, embedded throughout every single section. So as a result of the literacy framework, stakeholders will have a common understanding of MTSS. We ensure that all learners' instructional needs will be met as a result of consistent implementation of the MTSS framework. And educators will partner with families and community members, collaborate with peers, use data as an exchange that deepens teacher understanding of their learners, and inform any necessary adjustments to their instruction, engage in ongoing professional development, and receive support and coaching to transform curriculum and instruction. So now, let's take a look at how the birth-to-adult literacy framework will be laid out. So there are five age bands in the framework from birth-to-adult learners. And because of the collaborative nature of this writing process, you will see aspects of special education, dual language, English learner, and library and media in each section, as well as them having their own separate sections. Each key section also addresses five important elements: family and community engagement, research-based practices, standards-based instruction, assessment and data, as well as intervention. Thank you for your time, and I am going to turn it over to Executive Director Rose to provide a few highlights from each section of the framework. Thank you.
Thanks, Melody. So now we're going to look at specific sections. So now we're going to look at specific sections as Melody introduced to us. So the first section that we're going to begin with is birth through age three. We are emphasizing that literacy does not begin and end in our K-12 system, rather it begins in our fa- with our families at birth. Therefore, as a result of the framework, learners ages birth to three with support of primary caregivers and teachers will meet languages and literacy development benchmarks. Family educational opportunities will be expanded beyond current language-specific classes provided in Oremo, or Remic, Spanish, Somali, Hmong, and English. Learners birth to age year, excuse me, learners birth to three years old and their primary caregivers will have enhanced educational opportunities supporting multiple, multicultural perspectives, including American Indians, African-American, and Asian-Americans. The next slide we'll look at is pre-K, and I want to highlight a few pieces around our PK literacy framework that all learners will have access to culturally transform thematic curriculum that will create literacy-rich opportunities for them to develop early literacy skills. All PK learners will have literacy skills they need to ensure a successful transition from PK to kindergarten. And all PK educators will receive professional development and coaching in curriculum transformation, assessment, differentiation, and early literacy to support learners' individual literacy growth and development. As a note, we will be covering elementary and secondary framework in the upcoming sections. So I will jump to the adult learner. Again, as we consider all of our students in MPS, we have adult learners who play a key to strengthening our communities and who, in many cases, have their own students in MPS. It has been an honor to include adult education in this literacy framework work. So as a result, adult learners will have access to high-quality programming centered around student voice, data, and best practices, redefined to support their goals as English language acquisition, obtaining a secondary credential, and college and career preparation. Adult learners will be invited to provide continuous feedback and participation as thought partners, influencing curriculum development, instructional practices, professional development, and program offerings. Adult learners will have access to a customized, to customized learning plans, differentiated course offerings, and multi-tiered systems of support developed to enhance student outcomes. Households and community members, workforce development agencies, and local colleges will be engaged as co-creators and partners in literacy. For our dual-language and English learners, MPS dual-language and ELD programs will partner with families and students to co-create student goals, instructional lessons, and community-based learning experiences embedded with language development. Dual-language and ELD programming will be structuring spaces for translingual and cross-linguistic transfer within literacy instruction. MPS will require and set up strong systems of collaboration for all stakeholders in support of student learning and language development. MPS will align special ed and ELD programs within language acquisition guidelines and instructional best practices for bi-multi lingual students. And MPS will develop, pilot, and implement needed MTSS resources to focus on bilingual and language considerations through the tiers. For special ed, Special Ed Department is relentlessly focusing on students receiving individualized services and equitable instruction in their least restrictive environment and are committed to educational evaluations and services that are not predicted by student race. The Special Ed Department developed this mission in 2016 and continues to spotlight the intersection of special ed and race. Having opportunity to learn to read is a right for all students who attend Minneapolis' public schools. Our first commitment speaks to our students and how they will continue to increase access to tools that provide MPS students with the ability to access age and grade-appropriate core and instructional instruction through the use of universal technology and assistive technology skills. The Special Education Department continues to partner with teaching and learning on the implementation of the Universal Design of Learning, which includes universal access to high-tech supports like Google Read and Write for all MPS students. It will continue to deepen our collegial learning, add assistive technology software opportunities for students, including Software Learning Alley and Book Share. Our second commitment is at the heart of the district work with curriculum transformation and the supports of MPS educators in the, in utilizing the age-appropriate, whole-child approach by using data and measurement tools that are culturally responsive and relevant to the learners and our family. The third commitment will to, will, is to assess current engagement practices and the implementation of equitable evaluation and intervention practices. This commitment reflects the district priority of MTSS. Our MPS educators will disrupt institutionalized and historically predictable practices that have been disproportionately identified by students of color for services through all disability categories. And lastly, it is our commitment that through authentic relationships, we will grow together, creating shared knowledge of language and literacy between students, family, community partners, and educators. The relationships are all about the responsibilities of cultivating through the IEP process. One way we do this is to evolve our shared time into true conversation about the students' reading strengths and areas for growth and co-create a plan of action. Collaboration between students, parents, educators, and community partners to gain diverse perspectives of language and literacy development. Here is the framework timeline. Writers of the framework include people from all backgrounds and expertise, teachers, coaches, district program facilitators, administration, and others. During the month of May, we have been engaging stakeholders in feedback sessions. We wanted to provide enough time to ensure our values, beliefs, and priorities are aligned before developing our work plans. Final framework and work plan should be completed in July. We will be rolling out some of the framework with PD in August. Again, I want to highlight this as a framework and let you know that the work plans are being developed for the portion of the plan, so it isn't just a framework that sits on the shelf, but is actually something, something that transforms literacy instruction and student experience in this district. And now I would like to turn it over to Megan Gastick, Elementary Literacy District Program
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Board members, Superintendent Graff, Student Representative, and our Minneapolis community. My name is Megan Gastick, and I am one of two Elementary Literacy District Program facilitators in MPS. Tonight, I will be sharing elementary literacy updates with you, a brief overview of the expected student outcomes from our literacy framework, and updates to our Read Well by Third Grade Plan. Back in December, we shared with you four key adult literacy practices. This evening, we're excited to share a few updates in regards to those adult practices. In terms of early literacy content knowledge, all K-5 principals and teachers have been asked to complete a training on dyslexia. This course emphasizes structured literacy as instructional practices that benefit students who struggle learning how to read, as well as students who display characteristics of dyslexia. The practices of structured literacy are good for all our learners. This course, Students Who Struggle: What Is Dyslexia, is available to all our pre-K through eighth-grade licensed staff, general ed, special ed, specialists, coaches, and related services, and our school administrators. All pre-K through eighth-grade lesson staff are expected to complete this workshop by September 30th, 2021, and administrators are expected to complete it by June. K-5 principals, K-2 literacy, and math specialists, and our differentiation specialists then received additional follow-up PD about the PD in terms of structured literacy and the characteristics of dyslexia. And we also reviewed the requirements of Minnesota State Statute, Section 122.12. Strong literacy core instruction. Since December, we've advised principals to visit at least four classrooms nearing our literacy block, specifically during phonics instruction, and provide feedback to the teacher. When we monitor and provide feedback about our instruction, paired with professional learning, we know better and can do better. Our kindergarteners and first graders have been assessed with early reading assessment. This assessment measures three of the five pillars of reading: phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency. Effective team collaboration. We have provided PD opportunities to develop our processes and protocols in terms of collaboratively analyzing our student data and reflecting on our instruction. And we're in the midst of hiring our K-2 literacy and math specialist at every elementary site across the district and developing quarterly coaching plans. Literacy acceleration, extension, and intervention. We're excited to announce a three-year partnership with the Evidence-Based Press Program. Press, or Path to Reading Excellence in School Sites, was developed by the Minnesota Center for Reading Research through the University of Minnesota. It offers professional learning opportunities and resources focused on high-quality core instruction, data-driven decision-making, and reading interventions within the multi-tiered system of support. Over the course of three years, all K-5 general education teachers, administrators, K-2 literacy math specialists, and our differentiation specialists will be trained on implementing press reading interventions respective to their role. After participating in press training classroom teachers across Minneapolis will be able to analyze their fast bridge assessment data and provide targeted and explicit reading interventions in tiers one, two, in tiers one and two. Teachers will build common language and use systematic collaborative processes to make data-driven decisions that support students in developing foundational reading skills and thus their love and confidence in reading. This is a pivotal and really exciting time for MPS educators, because we have the opportunity to recommit to all of our students and improve upon our instruction. Over the past few months, we have collaborated across departments, with teachers, administrators, and families to develop a literacy framework that will provide equitable outcomes, high expectations, and rigorous learning. With the district-wide implementation of our literacy framework, we can expect the following from our youngest kindergarten learners all the way through our fifth graders. All K-5 MPS learners will read, write, and comprehend text at or above grade level by receiving explicit and systematic reading instruction that develops their automatic word recognition, language comprehension, and strategic knowledge. All our K-5 MPS learners will engage with literacy instruction that fosters their love for literacy by developing their identity, skills, intellect, criticality, and joy. They'll all use reading, writing, speaking, and visual representations in development of their voice and criticality. All of our elementary learners will have the literacy strengths and needs regularly assessed using multiple measurements, so educators can better understand their strengths and needs to inform their curriculum and instruction. And finally, all of our elementary learners will have educators who will engage in ongoing professional development and collaborative planning that supports curriculum transformation process and literacy development. Minnesota school districts are required to develop a local literacy plan to ensure that all students are reading well no later than the end of third grade. This plan addresses the third-grade reading proficiency objectives of the district's World's Best Workforce Plan and our requirements of the Read Well by Third Grade Minnesota Statute, Section 122.12. The local literacy plan will be shared with the school board and submitted to MDE by July 1st. It is accessible to the public to view. The main objective of the plan is to ensure that every student has a solid foundation of literacy skills and continue to expand the meaning of text and to transfer these skills into all content areas. Quality literacy instruction provides a strong base of literacy skills, which will support all students to read by third grade and extend to later years to close the achievement gap. We will ensure that all students will be college and career-ready. Literacy incentive aid provides general funding through formulas based upon the percentage of students who meet or exceed the standard for reading proficiency on the third-grade reading MCA, and upon the percentage of fourth-grade students who meet their annual growth target goals on the reading MCA. In order to receive this aid, MPS must submit our local literacy plan to MDE. The Minnesota Legislature seeks to have every child reading at or above grade level no later than the end of third grade, including our English language learners. And that teachers provide comprehensive, scientifically-based reading instruction. As a district, we must identify before the end of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all students who are not reading at grade level. Students identified as not reading at grade level must then be screened in a locally determined manner. We use FAST for characteristics of dyslexia. Students in third grade or higher who demonstrate reading difficulty to a classroom teacher must be screened as well. This law, Minnesota Statute 122.12, Reading Proficiently No Later Than the End of Third Grade, requires that our Read Well by Third Grade Plan attends to four specific areas: identification and reporting, parent notification and engagement, intervention, and staff development. Improving the literacy achievement of all our students is essential for the success of our community. It requires strong and collaborative leadership, rigorous and ongoing professional learning, and dedication to excellent teaching in every classroom. It will take a sustained focus on pre-K through third-grade literacy development as we endeavor to ensure all our MPS students are reading proficiently by third grade. Currently, we have implemented the 2021 plan, and we're reflecting and revising our plan for the 2122 school year. As we move to the draft and revision stage, we will align it to the birth-to-adult literacy framework, add in culturally sustaining practices, add an intentional focus on early literacy, add additional requirements for teacher training in dyslexia, and add our MTSS literacy framework. We look forward to providing you with this plan in June and submission to MDE before July 1st. Now, I would like to turn the presentation over to my colleague and friend, Molly Vassage, Secondary Literacy Program Facilitator, to share more about secondary literacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Chair Ellison, Board members, Student Representative, Superintendent Graff, and Community Members. I also want to recognize and thank our translators. My name is Molly Vassage, and I am honored to be the 6 through 12 Language Arts and Reading District Program Facilitator in MPS. I'm excited to talk to you this evening about the secondary literacy framework we've been developing during the last month. Our secondary literacy framework describes a shared, district-wide vision of literacy learning in secondary classrooms, something we haven't had in MPS before. This shared vision will build on current literacy practices and identify additional practices needed to create alignment and consistency district-wide so that our learners have equitable experiences across Minneapolis. Next slide, there you go. The secondary framework aims to honor and respect our learners' realities and identities, love and celebrate who our students are, while cultivating literacy skills to prepare them to lead flourishing lives. This slide shows our goals for our learners and educators. First, learners will engage in authentic disciplinary literacy practices that affirm their multifaceted identities and experiences. Disciplinary literacy is reading, writing, and thinking like experts in each discipline or content area. This occurs across classes, not just language arts. For example, in a social studies classroom, learners research an author who wrote a letter decades ago and analyze their position. Or in a physics class- Or in a physics class, learners will write their own science experiment. Secondly, learners will receive instruction to support vocabulary, critical thinking and comprehension. Educators will provide additional support to learners who need to build their reading and writing skills. And educators will continue to challenge learners who meet or exceed standards by adding depth, complexity, novelty and sometimes acceleration. Thirdly, educators will engage in ongoing professional development, and I'll speak more about this in a later slide, as well as collaborative planning with colleagues, key aspects of M T S S that Melody mentioned. Ongoing coaching from building and district specialists is necessary for continual improvement of educator practice. Fourth, educators will have consistent assessment expectations and strategies. Educators will assess learners literacy strengths and needs regularly using multiple measurements, including standardized screeners like FAST and also classroom based assessments like essays, lab reports, research projects and learner surveys. Educators will use that data from these assessments to make adjustments in their teaching and more effectively serve all of our learners. On this slide, we name a couple of key instructional practices that we describe in the framework. First, and this is the first bullet point, the framework emphasizes literacy practices that sustain learners identities, languages and cultures. In middle school and high school classrooms, our learners continue to grow as readers, writers and thinkers as they read and respond to texts by diverse authors that enable critical thinking and perspective taking. One way we will support this is by expanding classroom and school library collections with texts written by authors from different cultures and languages, as well as texts that are audiobooks and other forms of media. These collections allow for more frequent independent reading opportunities and small group reading groups. This way, learners can have more voice and more choice in choosing what they would like to read. We want our learners to love reading and really see themselves as readers. The new six through twelve language art standards also stress the value of students reading self selected text. Moving on to that second bullet point. In middle school and high school, our learners are reading complex texts that are specific to the discipline, like science or social studies. Yet our learners need support to understand what they are reading. One goal of the framework is for all secondary teachers to have the knowledge and ability to teach students strategies for building their academic vocabulary, their personal understanding of how they make sense of what they read and their comprehension. Additionally, the framework names information and digital literacy practices. As a result of the pandemic and the transition to distance learning, educators have developed new knowledge and practices around information and literacy, and so have our learners. As we transition to traditional classroom spaces, we want to take those best practices and continue to invest in 21st century learning. Some of these digital literacy practices include forms of digital communication, presentation, production and feedback. Digital literacy can also include media literacy, forms of journalism, art and advocacy. For example, in a 12th grade language arts classroom, learners study the genre of podcasting and then create their own podcast. And then for this last bullet point, in order to meet the needs of all of our learners, middle school and high school educators will approach assessment and the use of data as an exchange that deepens their understanding of their learners and informs any necessary adjustments to their instruction. For example, a sixth grade teacher may assign their students to develop an advocacy website that provides a solution or to an environmental or social issue such as air pollution in Minneapolis. The teacher will review the learner's research process and provide feedback leading to deeper critical thinking and the construction of ideas. In order to implement this vision, we need to invest in ongoing, consistent, long term professional development and educator training. Here you can see three upcoming partnerships that we're excited to share with you. The first is a partnership with Press, an organization housed in the Center for Reading Research in the University of Minnesota. And this partnership really focuses on our six through eighth grade core teachers across disciplines. The second is reading apprenticeship, a program for training teachers about helping learners to become aware of how they are thinking about what they are reading. And lastly, is a partnership with the Minnesota Writers Project. This will be our second year facilitating workshops with a group of teachers around culturally responsive curriculum and instruction. Thank you so much for your time. And now I will turn it over to Chair Ellison for questions about literacy.
Thank you so much. Um, all staff, you did amazing job. We are going to, I know we have two other presentations. We're going to focus here. Literacy is one of our priorities. Um, so board members, I want you to um raise your hand if you're in the room. I think I've got two directors in the room. Let Director Caprini know. Otherwise, other directors who are on Zoom, if you could use the raise your hand feature so I can call on you. Um, we've gone through a lot, birth to adults literacy. So if you have any questions, um, let me know. Director Caprini, any? Any questions in the um?
Um, no, not at this moment. I actually do have a question, but I'm trying to find the slide that I have the question about.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Um, Director Anison.
Thank you. Um, this was a very thorough presentation. So I really appreciate the time we spent here tonight and I, yeah, I would echo Chair Ellison in saying, I hope we take the time here to, you know, at the time we need to discuss this topic. This is an important topic. It's one of our goals uh this year. So I, I think, I think we should take the time here and this section tonight. Um, all right. So I, I do have a question. I guess I'm going to start it more with a comment. And I don't know, Superintendent, I, I addressed this question to you and you can figure out kind of how to respond, but it's really more of, I'd like to take this discussion just a little deeper, I guess, and so I set that up um that, that way. Um, so I want to thank everybody first of all for their work here tonight. This was, I, we heard from so many people and that's really interesting and exciting and I, I really deeply appreciate that. But I also want to recognize that, that, that this has been really clearly very difficult work for a lot of years. And we've obviously put a lot of time and effort into the information that we heard here to, tonight. But I want to recognize, recognize that. Um, but also saying that this is a really, the, the literacy um topic, the, the discussion about literacy is, it's just a long and it's a hard journey. And I, I think that every step that we take is, has been hard fought, right? Like every direction. And I think it's very easy to, to focus on the journey to say, well, when are we going to get there? When, when is our journey going to end? What is the end? What is the end game for this journey? And I, I think that there will be an opportunity uh for this board. I know to, to talk about that more in depth perhaps over the, over the summer. We haven't gotten to meet in person and I, I think there's an opportunity for us to talk about that end journey a little bit more specifically, but that's not where I want to talk tonight, even though I know that's really where typically um everyone goes. And the reason I don't want to do that is because I, I do know that any progress we make in literacy, every step that we move forward is really difficult. And um, as reflected by all the information and all the different aspects that were covered tonight. There is no, I don't believe there is one thing that um one magic thing that will get us there, but it's all of these things that were covered here tonight coming together. And so what I would like to expand upon, Superintendent, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk a little bit about kind of the, the path that we're on. So I know we're on the right path because we have, we've previously built, we've done our literacy curriculum and we've done, um, I know some extensive training in our literacy curriculum. And we know we're generally on the right path because we've seen incremental progress in our, in our metrics, in our results. But I'd like to connect what we talked about here tonight. Um, just how we know that this will continue to be the right direction, not that long term, like when are we going to get there? But rather, what are maybe some incremental steps that we hope to see as we, as we um implement the things that were mentioned here tonight and moving forward? Like what would be different? And how will we know that we're, that we're um being successful as we talk about training teachers, as we talk about um hearing, kind of checking with families and hearing back on wanting to be culturally relevant with our curriculum, as we talk about wanting ongoing collaboration? How, how will we know like those things are, um, being successful? And then um also, what I'd really like to talk about, thank you, there was a, a mention of finances. And I wonder if there's an opportunity connecting back to the Esser dollars talked about in finance today uh for, I guess, to accelerate our journey with, or if we see opportunities to accelerate our journey with um Esser dollars. Um, it doesn't have to be, I'm not looking for you to get specific, like we're going to do this, but rather is there an opportunity, whether it's, you know, um, kind of more intensive training or, for example, does that make sense? Sorry, that was quite a bit.
Chair Ellison, if I may respond, um, thank you, Director Anison, for your, your question. I think it'd be helpful for me to just kind of restate what I think I, I heard. And really, there, there's a part of us that wants to get to this space of this is a framework and what will the plan look like when the framework is done? And let's talk about that and how we're going to get metrics and what are we going to measure? And I think as, as stated tonight by um our, our team here, the, the intent really is to ground ourselves in the values and beliefs and priorities we have around literacy. And so the effort was to create the birth through um adult framework, which, which really is setting us up as um the bedrock for all learning. And into your question about what will we expect to see, I, I look at our district as a very diverse district, um thirty four thousand students uh who we have here currently, and they're on this continuum of learning. And in that space that they're at, at the moment, they have to have the supports that they need to be successful. And when we talk about literacy, they need the curriculum that is culturally sustaining or relevant to them. They need the instructors who are able to provide that and deliver it in a way that engages students. So it's not only the professional development and instructional practices, but it's the knowledge that our educators have and need. And then it's the environment that has to be uh, you know, presented in a way that students feel comfortable to be vulnerable and, and safe in their, their learning and their challenges. So the idea of a, a framework and what we would expect to see over time is that no matter what student we have in front of us, whether it's someone who's been with us for ten years or eleven years or thirteen years as a pre K and then a senior, we have structures in place that will support them and take them where they are and move them forward. And so we talk about that um, that progress that they will make. And in some cases, it will accelerate them beyond what um we would expect. In other cases, it will accelerate them up to where we, we need them to be. Um, so as far as what, what will be different and how can we measure that? I think that is part of the, the plan work that is needed. But ultimately, we would have students who are both um skilled in understanding how to read, as well as being able to take information that they're reading and apply that to you know, the next level of uh, of, of learning. If that, if they, if I'm responding to your question um as I heard it.
Thanks. Um, yeah, and um, kind of, I think that I, I'm in agreement in saying, well, I, I, well, I understand that many people kind of naturally want to go to this place of saying, okay, where, where is the end result? I'm actually saying, I don't want to talk about that. And maybe a different way, maybe a better way to say that is how does this connect maybe to the previous literacy work that we've done? I know we've spent quite a bit of time, um, you know, setting this up in um in the adopting our literacy curriculum. And maybe you could just, maybe that's a better way to ask. How does that, knowing that that um, the work that we've done has brought us along our journey? We've taken steps forward with the work we've done. We know this. Um, and how can, how will this work, I guess, connect with that and continue us on the path forward? Might be a different way to ask that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. So the, the first year I came into the district, one of the priorities we had was to address our lack of a, a curriculum um for, for literacy or for reading. And so we went through a process, a robust engaged process with our community and staff to adopt a reading curriculum. And so obviously, in an ideal situation, we would have a framework set up. We would have kind of the values, the, the um, the beliefs, the priorities. We would have a, an existing curriculum that we could continue to utilize and we would develop a plan around that. So I think the, the timing of things has led us down the path of getting a curriculum, getting that in place, training staff on it, making sure it's a, you know, culturally responsive for our students and, and also meets the standards that we have across the state. And what we've recognized is that's not enough. I mean, we, we all know that, but we recognize that that will give us incremental growth. Um, but we have to create a stronger, more, more robust structure of supports for both our teachers and our students. And that's where you heard the um, the integration of the multi tiered systems of support from our uh, our M T S S coordinator. You know, that, that, that is the work that has to happen where when you look at your student population, most of our students should be operating in the, the tier one um uh space. That's what we want. We want to provide high quality core instruction for all of our students. And that's where we hope to have eighty percent of our students being successful. The remaining tier two and tier three would be for the, the twenty percent or so that need that support from time to time, whether it's a moment in time or it's a, a little bit longer. So that's the intersection that we're trying to create with this work around the framework. And I, and again, reinforce the, the idea of our four core priorities that we have in Minneapolis Public Schools. They're all very, very connected. So literacy is obviously the, the bedrock of, of our learning. Uh, the social emotional learning and the, the equity are the foundation of how we engage with our students or how we need to be present for our students. And then the multi tiered systems really is about all of the technical pieces of um, you know, what is the business process we have for identifying when we have to talk about data? Or what is the, the next step in our, our structure when a student is not successfully getting what they need? What do those resources look like? So it is, it is a work in progress. And by that, I also mean we're on a continuum of getting to that point where it will um yield the results and the success for our students only when we can pull all this together. Um, as I mentioned earlier, you, it's not enough to just adopt a curriculum and train teachers on it. It's not enough to just say, we're going to work closely with the higher ed institutions to make sure all of our, all of our um educators who are coming into the district, you know, are trained in, in reading literacy. They need that culturally uh uh sustaining and relevance pedagogy. They need to have a good understanding of who they are and how they show up. And they also need to understand the needs of our students and our community. And so those are all of the, the multi layers of things that we're operating with. And so I, I commend the board and our staff for, for recognizing that all of those things contribute to the outcomes for our kids within our district and what we, we need to be doing. Um, so I would say our, our, our sequence of how we are addressing this is part of uh where we, where we started um five years ago. And I think we're in a much different place now than we were five years ago. And obviously, it's not the outcome that we want for all of our students yet. But I do believe that us, um, we're building the right, right supports and the right structure um for, for what is needed.
Uh, yeah, thank you. And you said that better than, I guess, what I was trying to say. I was trying to say something uh similar earlier, but I think you said it better. And that's what I was referencing when saying that this is just, this is a really long journey and the end result is when this all comes together. Like we're hearing different pieces and just the complexity, certainly that it's all connected um with each other. And we are we know that each, each step that we take, it's, it's never an easy step, right? The step, every step is extremely difficult. And so it's to our credit for every step we take, but yet we know, we know that there, you know, we want to get there faster and there's certainly um always like strong interest in when, when the journey is going to be done. And again, I, I think that there's um opportunities for the board to talk about that um at perhaps a, a later time when we're able to come back together um in person. But so that was not my intent. But, so that was not my intent to get into that tonight, but rather to recognize the steps that we've taken and how difficult those steps have been, and to recognize that this is another part of the journey. And what you, I know that we have a little bit of time, and I wondered if we could also just make sure we address or talk a little bit about the ESER dollars, and if there's opportunities. And it's okay, if you want to come back to that, that's fine. But if there's opportunities for the ESER dollars to accelerate our literacy journey.
With the Chair Ellison's permission, I can highlight some of the information I shared early at the finance meeting, and then certainly offer Dr. Fearing to speak to some of those literacy investments that we've mentioned already. But I think you're all aware, the funding that we've received from the federal government through the state of Minnesota around the elementary-secondary emergency relief dollars. ESER I, that portion of those dollars, really did focus on the distance learning space that we were in last year, and recognizing that we purchased literacy materials, which included our benchmark readers and some different phonics manipulatives and things. So made those investments through those resources and dollars. We also had special education materials, and then materials for teachers to write and to show how to support literacy in a written format as well. ESER II dollars, which are dollars that we're currently utilizing right now, we do have work that's happening, identifying a literacy cluster at one of our schools, I believe it's Loring Elementary, and how we're going to support with the Groves Academy. We also are focused, again, on getting this framework done and whatever support we need around engagement, utilizing those resources. But as we look to ESER III and further planning for next year, you'll see in the budget that we have developed in front of the board, that there's a significant amount of investment in there around literacy. And I'll ask Dr. Fearing to maybe speak to that a little bit. Because again, those ESER III dollars are yet to be utilized and cannot be accessed until we get through ESER I and ESER II. So Dr. Fearing, could you highlight some of the investments we have made around literacy in the last, through this budget process?
Sure. I'll open one again. So within this last school year, and then moving forward into next school year, we're really trying to build and create kind of stair steps. And so, this school year, you know, we had the K-2 literacy math teachers on special assignment, TOESAs. And they were in our title sites that had a concentration of 70% or higher. And we wanted to start small and start with that group, work on coaching, working on trying to figure out, how can we best leverage these staffs in schools? And then moving into next year, now that's where you're going to see these K-2 literacy and math TOESAs in all the sites. So now, we have the ability to build on capacity. And we had very, very little attrition of the coaches that were in buildings this year. So most are staying in their building, or they're moving to another building if there was a grade level configuration change, et cetera. So I'm really glad that we have kind of that initial base and then building off of that. So that was a pretty big investment, when you're thinking about staffing and the amount of time and professional development we spent with those coaches. And they did amazing job, even going into distance learning, all hands on deck, and being called into several different areas, but really seeing that job embedded professional development, because it's really hard, I know as a former teacher, to engage in professional development at 5:00 at night after you've done a whole day of teaching. So actually, having it during the day, you know, when you can have that conversation with a coach, they can come and observe, provide feedback. So I'm really seeing that that is one place to leverage. I would also say, going down the professional development path, one of the things that we wanted to do, as Superintendent Graff alluded to, was really combine and integrate that curriculum transformation piece and equity competencies with literacy instruction. So we were able to, this year, host Front Lines of Justice, and last count that I am aware of, we had over 400 teachers engaging in that every month. And it's really kind of going through the reflecting on one's bias, but then also, how does this really impact how you teach and what you teach? And so, it was really exciting to see that happening. And then he gives me through the Office of Black Lives and Achievement, he is also hosting for middle school teachers, professional development. And then, of course, through Indian Education, Jennifer Simon is opening up more best practice professional development for teachers, and not just teachers at best practice sites. This is for all teachers to engage. Our ethnic studies professional development is not just for ethnic studies teachers. In fact, I had a great conversation with a social studies teacher at Southwest, who is not teaching an ethnic studies course, but has engaged in the professional development, has found it really transforming in what he's teaching and how he's teaching his courses that are not necessarily ethnic studies. So that's been posted by Dr. Keith Mayes from the U of M. Then as far as, like, specific to the practice of literacy, as Megan alluded to, the dyslexia training, making sure that we have that available to staff, we are paying extended time for staff to complete that, if they don't have time during their duty day to do that, which is completely appropriate. And then we've also hosted specific sections of literacy, more skill-based professional development for educators, as well as they're willing to engage. The nice thing about, if there is a nice thing about this pandemic, is that so much has gone virtual and asynchronous. So now, we've developed a huge bank of professional development resources, where our staff can go to on their own time, be paid extended time, and then go through and get the professional development that they know that they need versus the one size itself. As you saw in the presentation, we really worked hard on identifying a partner. Excuse me one second. Sorry, I have allergies as it's close. So identifying a partner that was research-based, that could really help guide us from our research directors, so that's why you've probably heard it mentioned a few times, the Minnesota Center for Reading Research. And so, through them, we have been engaging in the press, which is the reading, basic core instruction, but also intervention. So engaging in that, as well as working on the contract with reading apprenticeship for secondary, so these are all costs, to help kind of bring it back to the original question, and then also extended time for that. And then, of course, the resource and the materials, we have allocated over $1 million to updating our media center, media center libraries. So right now, schools are going through a process of identifying books through various ways with their stakeholders, multicultural, and diverse books to add to their collections, because schools will have different choices based on the communities that they have. So we've been able to use K-4 dollars, as well as other dollars we had set aside. So really excited to see if the media center collections grow, and our students feel invited and participating in that as well. So that's a quick highlight of where we're spending the money and how we plan to then build on it going into next year.
Those are great examples. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Arneson. Director Alamein or Director Caprini?
Yes, thank you. Do you have a question? Oh, thank you. So Director Arneson, of course, asked both of my questions in regards to, you know, how are we going to see the progress? Like, what are we going to be looking at? What are we looking for? And the other one was the ESER question, so I was glad to get the answer on that. But I also wanted to say, I really appreciate the dollars that are being spent on the K-2 TOESA, and also the $2.4 million that's going to be spent on the software and dyslexia, and the multicultural books that we're, or Dr. Fearing just spoke of. So that's it for me. Oh, no, I'm not done, sorry. I apologize. The other thing is, I think we need to recognize that outside of this boardroom, in the community, there are folks that are going to be looking at other ways that we're going to, that this is going to be measured. And we're all aware that the one way that's going to be measured is, are the MCA testing. And that breaks my heart, because I feel like, it's kind of like being between a rock and a hard place, because we're all aware of how biased those tests are. My hope is that one day, we'll get to a place where they're not, they're not biased at all, first of all, and that we're actually able to move the dial on that. And I've said this before, I'm not an MCA, I don't really care for the MCAs. I prefer that teachers are actually in a position to let parents know the growth of their children and measure it in that way. I think it also is a better bond in some ways for students and their teachers and their families. I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Caprini.
Director Alamein.
I too am leery of the MCA as a form of measurement. If students love reading, you know, I would be happy. Director Alamein, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Couple of questions that I have. One, we talked about the framework commitment to the families, and I wanted to just kind of dive a little deeper into that and exactly what that looks like, when we say we want the families to see their identities, and we talked about how we want to perceive that communication. I guess I just want a little bit more clarification on that. And then also, when we mentioned the stakeholder's committee again, are we referring to the same, the stakeholder committee, is it one that kind of attacks or is used to respond to all of our different issues or concerns that come up to the table? How are we actually engaging with the community when we try to come up with these frameworks? Are we talking to the families? Are we giving them an opportunity to share what it is? They would like methods that they would like to see for their families to be learning this literacy and this math as we go further into it? Just wanting a little more clarification on that.
Thank you, Director Alamein. If I may ask, Dr. Fearing, to go back to the section that talked about the framework for expectations, I think it started with staff, and then it went to student, and then I believe it went to commitment to families. So if I got to have Dr. Fearing speak to that. And then I also heard the question around, how was this committee developed, or what was the process for engaging with these stakeholders as this framework was created?
Yes.
And I know that that is not something that is, it's not a continued committee for every single discussion. I think there's one specific to the literacy framework, and I'd like Dr. Fearing maybe to speak to that a little bit.
Thank you.
Good evening. I must have missed just the first part of the question, but I think I understand. So if I'm heading in the wrong direction, just signal and steer me in the right direction. So the commitment to families, you know, as we were thinking about this literacy framework and the foundational values and beliefs of what we believe about literacy in Minneapolis, we did not want to exclude what our families and our communities bring to us in terms of how they can support literacy in the classroom. And so, that conversation then led to, what is it that we have been doing to communicate what MPS literacy and language progression is, and how we communicated that to our families, to our community stakeholders, so they have an understanding of it? And so, that then is what led us to these commitments. And again, when you look at them, they're really about making sure that our parents and our families and our communities see themselves as partners in what we're doing. This isn't about me doing a phone call and telling them, like, this is what you need to do as a parent. But it's inviting them into the conversation of saying, you know, I have your student for every single day for, you know, 40 weeks out of the school year, and this is what we're working on. This is how I'm working with your student. Here are the areas of strength. Here are some things that I think we can grow together. And having that be done in a culturally sustaining way, so it isn't always this, like, levels of power, language, barriers, et cetera, but really about bringing them into that conversation, because we know literacy is really what is going to provide access for students later on. So we have to have that partnership with families. So that's how the commitment to family, those four bullet points that you saw were developed. Many, or I would say, two of those bullet points, probably the last two, we heard this come out actually in our PAC presentations, our Parent Advisory Committee. We heard them really speak a lot about what, how the communication is, when they get the communication, how it's perceived on their end. And then we also heard about, you know, when our students go to school, we want them to learn how to read, but learn in a way that affirms their culture and their language, so it isn't completely somebody else's protagonist or main character, but it's a protagonist or main character that looks like them, that has a shared experience with them, that gets them to the joy of reading and wanting to learn more. I would say for the stakeholder engagement to that question, well, let me pause and make sure I answered Director Alamein's question about the parent commitment?
Yep.
Because I didn't hear your question, so I just want to make sure.
Nope, nope, that was fine. I guess I want to just go a little bit more, because when I look at what's identified here, and you say you want us to see ourselves identified, I'm thinking about the professional development, and actually, who's doing that? Because to me, that will matter too, that we have our representation when it comes to the professional development, that we have those that are, you know, that look like us, that have experienced what we have experienced. So I'm wondering how that shapes into this framework with the professional development too, as well as being able to have teachers, again, that we can identify, or have those that are teaching that professional development look like us? Because you have to look like us in order to be able to teach that to others, to understand how and how we learn, how we learn what it is, and different ways that we grasp information and understanding. So hopefully, that gives you a little bit more clarification.
Yeah, thank you for that. Sorry again. I would say that there was a piece in this presentation where we really talked about engaging our community partners, because we know we can't do this work alone, right? We don't have full representation in district staff, district leadership, even in our buildings. And so, that's where we really need to engage with our communities. And so, that's where, you know, we have set aside funds, as well as time, for our community partners to come in and partner with us in that work. So internally, we have, you know, our Office of Black Lives and Achievement, we have Indian Education, we have in partnership with our Equity Department and Senior Leader Morris Office. So we do have some internal professional development that we can offer, but we know that it's not representation, representative of all of our culture's language. So that really is why we have funding set aside to engage our community partners with us in that work, either from a district level or at a site level. Hopefully that?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And then the second question, I think, had to do with the stakeholders. And so, we went about the stakeholder process just a little bit differently than I've seen in the past, when you're working on a large work plan or framework or work plan. Usually, you get to a point where then you present it to everybody, get their feedback, and then you move on. But we've really started engaging people from the beginning. And so, with that, then comes the tension of, well, you don't have everything laid out. And it's like, well, no, you're at the beginning, where we're kind of, you know, we have everything on the table, and we're trying to sort and categorize. But in the end, it's been very fruitful. We first began presenting to family liaisons, actually. We wanted to hear their experience in the schools, working with families specifically in regards to literacy. So that information then really started forming how we were then going to lay out the rest of our stakeholder engagement. From there, we then started with the parent advisory committees, and just really listening to them. We did go through a slide deck with them, but really hearing from them, like, what their experience has been with literacy, and then identifying the gaps in our framework that, you know, we're not necessarily attaching to the needs that we were hearing. And, you know, even starting out with our A-PAC, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, after that first round, we started changing things right away, because we heard things that were very meaningful, and that we wanted to make changes. And so, we've been going through all of those. We have engaged our principals, our school-based coaches. We have also engaged our ESPs. Again, I will publicly say and stand by that I believe that our ESPs and our classroom support staff are one of the biggest lovers we have with improving student outcomes, because they know our students very well. They're often the ones working with our students, one-on-one or in small groups. So we wanted to make sure we heard their voices as well. And so, working through the PACs and with them, and then we also just actually wrapped up our teacher forum feedback. And we have additional sessions, of course, with teachers, because we really do want to dig deeper with that group. So we finished that up today before moving into the committee, the whole. So it's been really great, and I can really see how things are morphing and changing. But I know that sometimes that can be frustrating, when people want to see a finished project and we're like, no, you're actually part of the change process. So, but we really have appreciated the feedback and have made some immediate changes based on what we've heard from our families and our stakeholders so far.
And if I can ask, just from the parent participatory, roughly about how many parents? Do we know, on an average, how many parents that, now, because I know we won't be able to touch everyone, but I'm just wondering, how far are we reaching with the engagement? Because I've been part of several different PACs, and sometimes when I went, it was only one or two people. And so, I'm just wondering, how far are we reaching with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Some of the PACs were circling back and trying to do a pick-me-up-for-a-second scoop. But, you know, it varies. It depends on how much... It depends on how much or the timing of the meeting and what we have. I think what's been really good is that we have spent time with our folks who are leading the parent or the, yeah, the parent advisory committees, really having them look at it and see it and understand it so that they can also bring it forward, even if we don't have tons of attendance at the first one. But we're also finding that we're having to do it differently for every parent advisory group too. I mean, some you can do a presentation and just, you know, get feedback. Some you have to engage in a conversation and kind of rotate through that space. And so I don't have a firm number, but I would say that this is not the only parent engagement piece that we will need to do because really we're just trying to set up the framework that's going to build the work plan. But we will continue to engage as many parents as we can. I know we're heading into the summer, which gets a little bit more difficult, but we'll continue. And all the support from the board would be great too in helping with that. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Director Elamene. Director Ins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, a lot of my concerns or questions were addressed by previous questions, but I just want to expand on one a little bit. We talked about the criteria by which we evaluate progress. And I was wondering if we could talk a little bit more about some of the different standards by which we measure, for instance, grade level reading. So that can mean a lot of different things. Is it a state standard? Is it the state MCA proficiency standard? Is there a more generally accepted, what is considered to be grade level reading? Are there national standards? What are the means that we use to evaluate them? And is there any? You know, when we talk about cultural responsiveness, is there any that is deemed more or less biased in any way? So I, if either Dr. Fearing or one of our literacy experts or superintendent graph of anybody, or I guess I suppose even senior officer Moore, if you would want to talk a little bit about that. And because I know that there has been somewhat of an evolution. Certainly, you know, you talked a little bit, I guess, before I got here, I think, based on the slides about our process and how that has evolved. And how we used to have a really narrow focus in terms of instruction and trying to expand that and make it more welcoming. But is there an evolution in the way in which we measure literacy as well?
So Director Ins, thank you for the question. I'll start and then I will ask members of our literacy team to kind of respond. I think to begin with, the first acknowledgement is that this philosophical approach around assessments or screening measures or how we, how we even determine a growth of a student when they are are reading is one that continues to be debated and kind of challenged. As you mentioned already, some of the biases that people believe are out there for, for some of the standard measures. As well as what is the intent and purpose of using this information? And I go back to being a classroom teacher, an elementary teacher, teaching all different grade levels in elementary and recognizing that when students came into the classroom, I needed to have a clear understanding of what their skills were and what their abilities were in terms of literacy. So it could start very simple by, I start very simply with looking at the standards as the, you know, identified by the state and what students should do and could do. From there, using a variety of, of forms of a screening or assessments. It could be, you know, at the early grades, it could be letter sounds, phonemic sounds, you know. It could be a Dolch word list. It could be reading recovery, you know, miscue analysis, reading curriculum-based measures. To today's age where we have more technologically driven assessments, you know, such as our FAST assessment that we use. And so the idea in all of that for me is really to have the teacher understand the needs and skills of the students so that they can support instructionally, giving them the, what they need to progress and to grow. Where I think we've, we've come into a measure of accountability to some degree is people saying, let's give a unified assessment that we can see across the board how students are progressing and compare that. And I think that that, that has led to more challenges because as already mentioned by, by others, there's some perception of how biased assessment it might be. There's also challenges with the way in which it's delivered. It's delivered over, you know, one particular time with one type of environmental setting. And there's not flexibility for understanding how the student might be feeling. So, or how they might be operating at that moment in time. So I think that that is, that is always going to be something we have to wrestle with when we talk about how are we measuring progress? And what I will say is that the state has a set of standards that they've adopted. And we as a state have an opportunity to weigh in on that, whether it's from an individual personal level to a community member or an organizational level. But I feel as an educator, I'm obligated to let parents know where their child is in relation to those standards. And so that's really important, you know, when we're talking about how we, we use that information. And as Dr. Fearing was mentioned, communication with parents, so letting them know, being able to ask the question of staff, is this an accurate reflection of what my child can know and do based on your experience? Because I think we've all been in situations where we've performed one way on one day and the next time it was completely different and not necessarily consistent with what we can do. So I think that's a very good question for parents to ask in any type of, any type of measurement or assessment. Is this, does this accurately reflect what my child can know and do? And if it does or doesn't, we as educators should be able to say, no, it does not. And here's why I believe that is the case. And these are the supports that we're going to put in place. If it does, we should be able to say, yes, and here's why I believe that. And these are the things we're going to do to further accelerate or advance your child's learning. And then finally, I think there's also the element of what Dr. Fearing had mentioned around parents have a lot to offer and they certainly have the, perhaps in most cases, the strongest knowledge of what their child's needs are. So they should feel comfortable asking us, you know, based on these results, based on this information, what are some things I can do to better support them in their learning? So I don't know that I've answered your question specifically, Director Ins, but I wanted to just kind of frame that up, that there are a number of different approaches to how we, how we address this idea of a measurement of a child's progress or a student's progress. And it varies on the continuum of where they are as learners. Both from a grade level perspective, as well as just what their skill sets are around literacy. So I'll ask Dr. Fearing maybe to highlight some of the different assessments that we use and we've consistently tried to, to share as a practice. And I think that is, from my lens also, when we talk about a multi-tiered systems of support, that is one area where if we're aligned and we're utilizing a universal screener across the district, then we have a greater comparability. We have greater opportunity for understanding and communication with our families. And certainly greater alignment with how we support the, the distribution of resources and interventions and accelerations for, for learning. Dr. Fearing, if you could add some more details perhaps?
I mean, I think it's, you know, in our elementary, we have many more assessments available for literacy than we do in secondary at this time, which is again, part of the work moving forward in our framework. And I think that the idea that assessment doesn't mean test. I think we've connected those, but they are two different words. And, and I think we have many teachers in our districts who are constantly assessing, you know, every minute, every hour of the day. And they're adjusting based on what they're seeing, what they're hearing and how students are performing. But we do at some point need to have some type of formalized way to assess so that we can do some, you know, triangulation of data too. Because otherwise it is very much subjective to, to what the teacher is experiencing with the student. And so just, you know, technically we have the FAST, we have screeners, diagnostics. So again, screeners are just to see where students are at. If there is an area for growth in a teacher would use a diagnostic just to go a little bit deeper and find out what specifically, what strand or what skill is it that needs to be targeted with further support? And then of course, we do have the standardized assessments of MCAs, but that should not take away from what educators should be doing every day with their students. I would say, or I would like to turn over to Megan Gastic, who's our elementary DPF, because I think she can maybe answer the question more about which assessments tend to be more biased? Or what, what can our educators, what can our educators do with the assessments that we have to make them more culturally sustaining for our students?
Okay, I, I think, I just wanted to clarify my question, I guess, a little bit. It was kind of, I specifically really just wanted to know, what are the means by which we determine whether or not a student is at grade level? So specifically that. So is it a, is it the MCA, does the MCA determine? You know, when we use that expression, grade level, because we hear it a lot, you know, a certain percentage of kids are not reading at grade level. What does that mean when we say that?
Yeah, Director Ins, I think from a, from the broad statement of a student being at grade level, the general, general reference is in relation to the, the MCAs and the standards. And that is a formal communication that we are obligated to share with families, you know, where the child is in relation to those standards.
Yeah, and so that doesn't, that's not something that we evaluate every year, right? That's only, we're talking, I think, one of the most common things we hear is the third grade, right? Because of the legislation that was passed with respect to third grade. And there's been such an emphasis, I think, over the last five years, right, about third grade reading. And so it's a reference to sort of proficiency in third grade as deemed by the MCAs, right? When we, when we hear that. But there are other ways, I know as a teacher myself, right? Like, you know, we have in the middle school where I work and the junior high there, kids are, you know, as part of their, a lot of times part of their specific individualized goals, they have a reading level goal that is to be, you know, to increase one grade level. And the criteria we use for that is not the MCAs, right? So there are other means by which we determine whether or not someone is considered to be reading at grade level, right?
Yes, certainly there are other measures that people have, have referenced around students reading and their level. As I mentioned, you have curriculum-based measures, you have FAST, you know, that would identify. And, and so I think we're getting into, you know, a lot of technical things where you'd have to have a psychometrician crosswalk this and how it correlates with the MCAs. But, yeah, I think just, just generally speaking, when people talk about where are they in terms of a grade level? They reference the MCAs, but I think even in that, there are, are cut scores that have to be considered and what those cut scores look like at the different grade levels. So it gets, gets very, very technical in that regard.
Okay, thank you. That's, that is the, that's kind of the main sort of just, I understand there's a larger discussion to be had about all this stuff and the, and I do appreciate the, the interest in what is considered biased assessments. And I, you know, I don't want to cut that off, but I think the board maybe has other questions and other priorities. So I didn't want to, you know, that, that was my main interest.
Thank you Director Ins. Director Caprini, you said you had a quick question?
Yeah, a quick question. Could Dr. Fearing tell me the difference between press and letters?
Yeah, hi, Dr. Caprini. So press includes both the professional development, but also the resources and materials that teachers can use while they're engaging in it. And so we have press K through eight, but the K five is really working on, is really focused more on the intervention piece. But it does allow for like, what does all, what do all students get for core? But then what is it that you need to press or you need to go further in for the students who need more support? And it actually comes with additional resources and materials. So this would be used to augment benchmark in areas that students need more support. Letters, as I understand it, it's the L E T R S. As I understand, is really professional development for staff and for administrators and how to lead through what, what literacy, the needs of literacy in the school with students. They're probably comparable in some ways. They're, they're probably similar in some ways. But they're also, I think, a little bit different in that when we're looking at press through the U of M, it's really going to match or work with the FAST. Because FAST also comes out of the U of M. So we wanted to make sure that there was alignment in what we're looking at through assessments and through the, through what our students are, our, our students are taking as their assessment literacy and then what are the interventions and supports that they need? So that they're both coming out of the U of M. But I haven't investigated letters too much, but I do know that Solfrey West, which is the vendor, as a teacher, I taught language, it was like language is an information point. It comes from the same vendor. And so I have a little experience with that. But I would say at this point, when we're looking at the different, the different organizations and vendors for what we want to do for our intervention on top of what we already had through benchmark and through FAST, press seemed to be the one that was the most aligned and had the most supportive trajectory for our staff and what we wanted to do over the next three years.
Okay, and then one last thing, professional development, is that required by teachers? Or are there like hours for the school year that they have to fulfill? That's it for me.
Sure, for press, the professional development.
No, no, professional development period across the board.
Yes, so as we're developing this framework, we understood that we need to be able to have high support, be able to provide it. We can't just, you know, say this is how it needs to be and walk away. There needs to be the, the opportunity for high support. So with the professional development, yes, it could be during the day, but it could also be done in asynchronous fashion. So, you know, people could do it in the evening on their own time. But I think the biggest thing for me is when we're looking at the ability for staff to really take in the professional development and apply is through job embedded. So it is during the day, but it's during the practice, right? So it's not like, you know, you sit and get one day and then you get all energized and you want to do it. But then, you know, life catches up and things happen and it, you, you lose it. And so we wanted to make sure that as we're looking at our professional development for literacy, it's job embedded. So that's why we've invested in coaches. That's why we want to make sure our building administrators have access to the information and know what to look for so they can support their staff during the day to have that time to, or for literacy professional development. But there'd be multiple opportunities and summer too, if staff would rather engage in it during the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that question, Director Caprini. Director Suriel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this incredible presentation. And I just want a clarification, maybe I just missed it. Was there any like community engagement put in this plan together? Or is that something that is like going to come as we move forward? This question is for Dr. Fearing.
For the framework, yes. We started with, so our steering committee, which is our academic division directors and executive directors, had subcommittees that were writing each section. After we had somewhat of a draft of the framework, that's where we had started engaging with like our family liaison, started to present to our PAC. And we're still in the middle of engagement, we're not done. And so some of the groups are going to have to circle back because to Director Elamene's point, you know, there was scheduling issues or it was over a time where not many could attend. But we're also hoping that as we continue to spread out through our various means that people are talking and then we will have a public website where people can go and that's where we'll have the translated slides and the ability to get, for people to give feedback, even if they weren't at the session. And we did record, video recorded the sessions as well, so.
Thank you. Yeah, let's take into consideration, you know, to be inclusive of our PTAs and PTOs. That's something that, you know, we have not like really capitalized on. You know, they are in our school sites and. You know, they are in our school sites and they know the schools, they know our students and the staff as well. And another question that I do have is, uh, have we assessed the the efficacy of the current curriculum, the instruction and the interventions? Because to me, it's like, uh, how do we like improve what we are doing if we don't identify, you know, like what needs to improve? I don't know if I make sense.
Yeah, I guess I'll take this question too. So yes, um, we're in year four of Benchmark at Adelante. And last year, which was year three, um, we wanted to do a comprehensive literacy evaluation. And we got through the step where we had our administrators and um building leadership um give their uh feedback um collected by ARE. And then the pandemic hit, and so we tried to get teachers and and tried to get feedback, but it was just such a crazy, complex time that the information that we got, we did not believe was representative of all our schools and all of our teachers. And so we have that, um, and we definitely have some um areas that teachers felt like Benchmark was um good and useful, culturally responsive, but there were other areas that definitely had um gaps and there were voids. We then um also um did, started this year with a literacy pilot. We tried, even though we were in distance learning and we were trying to still move forward with some of the work. And in that um pilot, we had a self-assessment by the teachers. They took it and they were really asking some deep questions about their use of the of Benchmark um and um where they felt it was most supportive and where it was, there were gaps as a as a teacher and how useful it was. So we have that as well, and I think the biggest thing that came out both from the survey that we had in last spring, but then also um from the self-assessment, was really the need to be able to link together culturally sustaining pedagogy and the actual curriculum resources and materials. So it seemed very com, it was very comprehensive of the materials and resources they had, but they wanted more support and how do you transform or how do you augment what we've been given to better serve the students who are in front of us? So that's, you know, we took that uh feedback and that's where in the framework, we're really keeping that as a foundation and know that, you know, Benchmark is what it is, but there's also additional work that we need to do to ensure that it's not just a box curriculum that someone whips out every day and says, okay, class, this is what we're doing today. But that there's really this opportunity for our educators to to feel empowered and have the skills and the and the confidence to take what is there in front of them and to make it fit the students um that they serve in front of them.
Thank you, Dr. Fearing. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's it for me.
Thank you, Director Suriel. Um, and I want to thank everybody for this great conversation. Um, we've been, um, liked hearing from a number of different staff members about literacy. Um, we spent a lot of time on this shared priority for us all. And looking at the time, I'm going to ask directors to look at the other two um presentations on your own. The STEM, um, the math curriculum adoption is on there, um, is in the board book. And so look at that. If you have any questions, um, maybe email them to Ryan and he can get staff um and answer for you. But looking at the time, going to move on to um exec session. So, thanks again, everybody. Superintendent, any last words?
I just just want to say thank you to the staff for their presentation tonight and thank you for the uh the board's interest and attention to this important topic. We do look forward to updating you in the the near future as we know this is part of our Committee of the Whole cadence, if you will. So we'll be bringing back more information around literacy and academics um in the upcoming months as we start the 21-22 school year.
Thank you, Superintendent. So now, as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B and Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero three, I will ask Director Arneson to move to close this meeting to the public to discuss the district's labor negotiation strategy related to negotiations with MFT, ESP, principals, adult ed, AMP, MACA, MAAAS, Teamsters Drivers, Teamsters Grounds, SEIU, and to discuss the Gruskusman versus State of Minnesota. So moved.
Second, Jordaine.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to close the meeting. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing no hands, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to close the meeting?
Director Arneson.
Yes.
Director Elamene.
Yes.
Director Ali. Director Suriel.
Yes.
Director Ins.
Yes.
Director Jordaine.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Aye.
Director Paul is yes. Chair Ellison.
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries and this meeting is now closed to the public. Directors, we're going to take a five-minute recess to reset and allow those in the boardroom to